I have any questions? We don't have them today, but obviously we're here, so if you could just get it to us. Sue, I see.
Who am I giving it to? I think this is going to collect them. If I email it to Mary Ann.
Either way, yeah. I think that's probably fine. Let's just scan it.
Drag and scan it.
Is everybody outside?
We're going to try to get you this up on the phone.
I'd like to call to order the interregational school committee meeting of Tuesday, May 21st, 2019. Bo Quah, Wayne Adams, Joanna Plancher.
Here.
Bill Buell.
Here.
Emily Dwyer.
Here.
Amy Felton.
Here.
Dick Hodges.
Here.
Lisa O'Conne, here. Chris Redding.
I'm here.
Deanna Trotta.
Here.
The next item on the agenda is the question.
To the power of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is the agenda. And I'm going to propose that we make some changes to it. Some of the school committee members are leaving a little before 7:00 p.m., so everything that requires a vote is going to be moved to the start of the meeting agenda, and that's going to be followed by the executive session. And then following that is going to be everything that's up for discussion, which is going to be the I-Radi assessment, summer on call, professional development, assistant principal position update, transgender and gender on the trauma guidebook, and school committee subcommittee minutes. Some more.
Second.
Any discussion on data? Can I have a motion to accept the business and finance committee subcommittee minutes from May 7th, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on data? Any vote in favor, any abstain?
I have to abstain because I haven't sworn in yet.
Can I receive a motion to accept the minutes on the business meeting of May 7th, 2019?
So moved. Second.
In favor? Public comment? Does that public comment?
No comment.
This time.
And before we ask for the superintendent's news, something we want to say?
Sure. Throwing Dr. Bartholomew off here, he goes, what, where are you up to? Just very quickly, the amount of time and energy that this man put into building the project moving forward, and the amount of time he put in the community, walking around, getting into households, talking to people, was tremendously, tremendously impressive. The network of advancing it was very clear with the overwhelming support of the community would not have been possible without everything that he did. But as Bill Belichick once said, "We're on to Cincinnati, and we're on to the next phase." And the next phase includes now the building, the construction. So on behalf of everyone here in the room, and all everyone in the district, this is for you, Dr. Bartholomew, go ahead and open it. By the way, also, would it be possible without the antimalots left, either tech recovery hop on those other pieces, particularly for fashion, very nice?
Also known as the designet.
Ooh, it's painted very nicely.
And also, this is customized, if you look at the back, it actually says Dr. Bean, so we have no confusion with the Penn Tucket logo and exactly whose helmet this is.
Nice.
And I was really hoping Mr. Lebreck was going to be here, because on numerous occasions he has said, "If he thinks he's going to get into that building when they're building it, no."
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
There it is.
Thank you very much. And I'm also going to say, because he's here in the audience, I see Jonathan Seymour, as much time as I might have put in there, again, I think he put in an extraordinary amount of time, as did, I see, Wayne Adams is on the building committee, we've got, Dean Trotta was on the building committee, Hannah was on the building committee.
Emily.
Emily was on the building committee as well, because I missed her at Golem Town meeting when I was going around, I forgot to mention it. But yeah, so there's a lot of work, but again, I just appreciate the opportunity, so thank you. Very nice.
I think you should wear it all night.
I have to wear your hat.
So superintendent news first. One, I think you all got a letter from Ms. Elise, I don't know if you read that or not, but she's been covering us, and I wrote her a thank you note, just because I feel like the work that she did covering us, everything was fair, accurate, and I really appreciated when she got out there and put out that information to the community, because I think it just helped people understand a lot of the issues. And if she was unclear on something, she would always communicate with us, so she got the facts right. So I just want to publicly thank her for the work that she did throughout the duration of covering us, and I think she indicated that maybe Jim Sullivan might be helping us next year. Me and I have worked a couple times previously. Very special thanks to you all. Second bit of news, wanted to share with you that we are finalizing a one-to-one for teachers with Chromebooks. We're going to attempt to have them in the hands of teachers prior to summer. For us, you heard from Mr. Buck at the beginning, that technology, we are grossly behind where we should be. And because of what happened this year with technology, we were able to save some money in that department, we're going to go out for first year, 115 or 220 Chromebooks, we'll be able to get to the teachers, we're trying to finalize all the detailed insurance and pieces like that. Fundamentally, if the children have them, which they do, in the entire middle school, in the elementary school, in the high school, they bring them up, teachers should have had these first, so they could learn how to use them and get all the information. We asked a lot of the educators to help with grades and assignments, and they're stuck to their PCs in their classroom, or whatever they're using at home. So I think this tool, especially since everything we're doing now is either on Google Docs or Gmail, will be a tremendous asset to the teachers. It will help advance in terms of communication with homes, setting up Google Classrooms, or just for parents to visit Google Sites. It's just a big opportunity for us to take this, to take a big step in the right direction. And then we can start to address making sure all the students, so middle school, they all have them, that all students start to have that same type of equipment in their upcoming years. That's the overall plan, just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Teachers don't know about that yet, so. And the final bit of news, right here. So part of my job is, Mr. Conway and I both attend the North Shore Superintendent's Round Table, and the state is divided out between all different districts. So we, everyone from the North Shore, all the students gather, we talk about big issues. Probably for about the last four months, the budget has been one of the biggest issues. And as you can imagine, one of the challenges, the North Shore social, the Berkeyers, that was, we're largely outnumbered when it comes to voting opportunities in the House. So a lot of the thoughts and ideas we have don't get put out there. So this, if cut off the press, is what we're going to be sending out, and I just wanted to go over this with everyone. So it basically lays out the biggest problems that are challenging us, and some of those include the districts being held harmless. So when you look at that, 58.6% of refund districts, and 14.3%, so 40%, there's no additional monies in there. So we're going to get hurt by that, because we have a wealthy community, even though our costs are increasing, we have the ability to pay. So we're held harmless, we kept at that minimum amount that the states willing to give us. Enrollment, so our enrollment's decreased, so you would think, if you pay by enrollment, and our enrollment's decreasing, what we're getting is decreasing, but again, the cost to operate is increasing. And that is not a cost that's driven by teacher salary or administrative salary, that is a cost that's driven by other factors. So if you go through this enough, just take a look at that graph, and this data is coming from a collection of North Shore school districts. So we combined all of our data, so what you're looking at are the averages. You can see, out of all the districts, we've decreased enrollment, that's something we know, we're down 26% in the last 10 years. So other places are hit just as hard. Special education enrollment has been relatively stable, you see an increase of only 5%. Out-of-district special enrollment, so there's no big, huge increase of kids going out of district for special education. But now, if you start looking at the costs, general fund operating budget has only gone up 40%. At that same time, out-of-district tuition costs for special education has gone up by 80%, and out-of-district transportation, almost 50%. It's just a message we put home with the representatives, our senators. Ms. Valzani was there, Mr. Adams was there, we were talking to Senator Lewis, who chairs the Education Committee in the Senate, as well as Senator Gisagnio, and this was the part that we just wrote home. We cannot sustain our small regional districts in the North Shore, social, or the Berkeyers without this problem being addressed. It will continue until someone steps up. There's several different options that are in the Senate debate, started debates today. Senator Tar's office contacted me, said they're in the midst of that. All three options, the most we get, Kentucky, will be $30,000, which is well less than the 2.5% increase that we paid out for district salaries. And I think it's, I want to say it's 0.4%, but $30,000 minimum, $40,000 maximum, in other school districts of our same size, getting a million, half a million is strong. So I wanted to share this with you, we're going to be sharing this everywhere we can. The idea is to just leave it all over the place, you are, both the government, I'm sorry, state governments, they understand, they've been to a lot of events, they do understand it's a complex problem, they're having to deal with a lot of issues. They're hoping to tackle the formula first, then come back to the second, but I just will, you will continue to hear from me on this, because this will cripple us if this continues. When I say, if this continues to cripple us, I'm not talking about 10 years down the road. It will be just in a few years, where you're going to start to feel negative impacts of this, and it's one of the primary drivers for why you saw everywhere around us, every school district around us, increasing their budgets by more, well over the 2.5%. Kentucky being the one that was staying more. So I just wanted to share this with you, spread the word. If you ever have any questions about this, please.
I have a question, you might want to comment. Did I see on the computer today that Representative Mira said that all local school districts will get a minimum of an additional $30 per pupil? And if that's the case, figuring we're 1,500, there's a 49,000 total, which represents half of the tuition of an out-of-place student?
That is correct. So $30 is what we've been, Mr. Lebreck and I have been bargaining, Lebreck is definitely the promise, he kind of prepped me for that, and that sounded like we're the Promise Act that's going to go, so it seems like a nice number, but 30% is nowhere near, $30 is nowhere near, anywhere near, 2.5%. So we actually end up, will lose, because everything else increases in cost, and $30 is not helping us keep. So again, the burden falls back onto our local tax breaks, our Kentucky towns, and that is going to continue to happen until, what we've asked for is, you try to fix a problem, you want a single formula, that's a challenging thing to do, but we know that all school districts have out-of-district expenses, not just the tuition, which they covered the circuit breaker, but the transportation part. And if they covered transportation, we saw it here, the average school district got $4 million back. And that is, doesn't matter if you're in urban, rural, suburban, everyone will benefit from that. Again, this is not an attack on special education, it's more of a, hey, a wake-up call, that at some point, someone has to address the regulation of how this is functioning, so that students who need services outside of the district can get there, and it's not breaking the local school districts that are supplying those services, supplying the services.
The public's benefits, this is supposed to be a big PR positive campaign, the public, are we really getting into education? That would equate to the cost of three pupils in our whole district educated for one year.
So, right, so if you take the $30, if you multiply the 2,500, right, you're going to end up, what it would cost, I mean, that's less money than it costs for us to send one student out of district. When I say send one student, it's a student who needs, needs to be out of district, because the services there are appropriate for what they need for their education, so, and circuit breaker, as we know, has not been funded at 75%, so we're only getting 68% back. We front the money, we reimburse the money the following year. I think I made this, 74, but we have instances where we're paying over $300,000 for a single student, several instances. And that's not out of the norm, for students who have those disabilities, that is what's needed for that child to proceed to proper education. It just, it needs to be carefully examined or funded by the state, so that's kind of what our plea is being bent, in order for those students to maintain those services, and for us to maintain the services within the district, to our, to all of our students, if the trend has to stop.
Thank you.
And then the only other thing I have, Madam Chair, is that I know our student rep is here, and he might have an update on that. So some past things that happened. Last night, the National Arts Society, introductions took place, and the foreign language section of that took place last week, or last week, I'm not sure if you were at it, you were here with Cap Page Jazz last Friday night. And then the eighth graders who were at the middle school came over here last Thursday for Step Up Day to tour the high school, the new high school, they will be first graduating class. And prom is taking place on Friday night, at Sea Glass on Salisbury Beach, prom night will be starting at 4:30. So you want us to all show up for the prom? No, you're not invited to that.
You can have dinner and drinks down below, I know you care, it's that right.
That's all I have. Thank you. I'm working. Well, that's great. Very exciting time of the year, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is the high school GPA and class rank adjustments.
So Madam Chair, I'll just take this very briefly. It seems like class rank should be a very straightforward piece, as should GPA, but it turns out, it's not the case, that's what's happening. It is a little bit different, some courses are included, some courses are not. It's just missing here, so. But it was, it was, it came up because we're transitioning to our new system, and I can't even tell you how much of a positive difference this new Infinite Campus one has. They said, well, we can't, this is going to be a problem if I was making these adjustments. Fortunately, this is an experience that I have had before, where this has happened statewide, so I'll be comfortable with kind of where we are with this, but it's a change that we need to make. Sure. Infinite Campus, as Dr. Bartholomew indicated to us, was not going to be able to use the same calculations that we had been using, which at first I thought, gee, that's a little problematic. And then as Amy Funk, who's our data manager, and I met with Mr. Smith, Mr. Seymour, and Robert Kohut at the guidance office, it was sort of like, woo, all right, here's an opportunity to make a change with something that we knew was probably not the best approach that we had been purring to use. But making any sort of changes like this for anyone in the middle is, can be tricky. And we sort of walked through a few different scenarios, how it would work, we actually went back and forth about a few issues, thought we landed somewhere, got some more feedback from some of our department chairs, and sort of went back around with another iteration. I think the best way to think about it is to, if you don't understand currently what we do, and on the back of that handout that you have, you have two scales, you have a current scale, 4.0, and then you have a proposed scale. And our current scale, 4.0, the 4.0 is actually the base of an A, of a grade of an A in our college prep class. If you get an A+, you actually get a 4.3, but basically that 4.0 sits there, and everything branches out after that. So then it's a weighted 4.0 formula, with the highest grade a student gets, an A+ in an AP class, worth 5.2 points. And basically, what we have been doing is, our class rank is not calculated using all of the same information as our GPA is currently, and that really is the issue. And that are presently, to calculate class rank, we only use five core subjects, English, Math, Social Studies, Science, along with, I have to flip it around, GPA versus class rank, as we're talking about, as I was saying, et cetera. So our GPA is calculated separately from our classroom, and our GPA only takes into account the core subjects. What we're looking to do is use GPA to calculate class rank, rather than keep two separate systems. We want to be able to include all electives in the grade point average calculation. Questions came up around colleges, for instance, and colleges, for the most part, recalculate a lot of GPAs anyways, and some of them take 5, 4, some of them take 4, some of them take other classes as well, they recalculate the A's. Continue to use a weighting scale, but we want to adjust it so that it's more equitably distributed, because it was not distributed equitably before. There was a rather large gap between college prep classes and honors, so we want it more equitably distributed between the levels. And then include all electives, the CP electives and less electives were previously identified in honors. Full year band, for instance, an orchestra, chorus, I believe, are listed in honors level electives, whereas all, I think those all others are. So that's sort of the main point of it. A couple of things I'll point out, and Seymour and Mr. Smith can speak to some of it too. What we, what we include in a student's GPA sends a message to our community and our students about what we value. And the fact that we calculated student GPA differently than class rank also sent a message, it sent a message that your electives weren't as important, and we don't believe that to be true. The, of course, the issue really is for students who are in the current junior class, as they prepare to be seniors, we would not make changes for those students. We would continue for them as seniors, and Ben, you'll be a senior, right? So whatever system is currently in place, we continue to use next year. We felt it was really unfair to kind of change a goalpost on the kids in the fourth quarter, basically, that wasn't really the fair thing to do. And we'll keep their system separate, be able to keep it separate, be able to determine GPA and class rank. But we would, for the incoming freshman class, incoming sophomore class, and then we sort of went back and forth about the incoming junior class, and the reality is, the majority of those students would not be tremendously impacted by this. We would not go back and recalculate students' grades from their freshman or sophomore year, we would simply apply the formula moving forward to those students, to the kids going into their junior year. Those students would begin the new calculations, their grades from their freshman, sophomore, and points, which GPA rank would stay the same. And we're proposing to do this, number one, because we have to do something different than what we currently do, but we can keep some things outside of the system, like in senior class. But the reality is, the system we're using was not considered to be a current system, and most districts around here are not using some system. And we also see it as an opportunity that as we move ahead in the next two to three years, prior to potentially moving into rebuilding, it's an opportunity to begin to address some of our other points for students, some of our other criteria, some of our other graduation requirements, programming, and really begin to evaluate, you know, our practices and how consistent they are with what we want. And I think that becomes a broader discussion to involve more, or sort of stakeholder here. And I don't doubt that potentially GPA and class rank could be something that gets addressed again within the next two or three years, as we begin to really address some of those things. I think that's what we're proposing to do tonight, it is a fairly impactful change for the district, and we certainly feel that it's really a good change.
Does anybody have a question?
Yes, I do. So although I appreciate why we have to do that, and I appreciate some of the things that we're trying to do, putting emphasis and showing our value with our electives and things like this, I question how the new scale was come up with, because I had concerns, so I actually ran my sophomore daughter's numbers and what it would be for her freshman year grades, old and new, and it does have a huge impact on what her GPA is. Beyond that, I had a friend who's a college counselor, who I kind of ran this by, she started doing some information dating about local school districts and what's happening in addition to if a council is down. And what the state, because as you said, the colleges readjust GPAs when they're applying, the state does that, so she also took what the state would have, and what we're essentially doing by changing this, is we're shortchanging our kids a significant amount. And even though the colleges readjust it, GPA that comes from your high school has a big factor in local scholarships, honor societies, like whether you're considered for certain college programs and things like that. So the first sheet that says GPA comparison, as it makes its way around, it takes an example of a B student, it has what the Penn Tucket old, new for each level of classes would be, CP honors, accelerated AP, and dual enrollment. If you take a look at Ipswich, for example, our, our new GPA is significantly lower than the Ipswich one. Georgetown, it's slightly lower. Brighton, slightly lower for honors, slightly lower like .1 for AP. Masco, Masco, same thing, slightly lower. Newbury Court, a little more significantly lower. But if you look at, so if you go to the State Desi Higher Ed website, that's what a B would be considered for each of their things. So there, we're, we're shortchanging, quite a little bit, not a huge amount, but still. The biggest group we're shortchanging, for dual enrollment purposes, the state considers a dual enrollment, I see our college credit course, to be an AP grade point average. So, so I think, taking a look at this information, compared to, you know, these are our local districts, and even though colleges say they look at our school, they look at our local area, at the geographical area, when they're looking at applications, and we're not putting our kids on the same, even stage for this. Honor societies, things like that. So then I did my daughter's, who is a very good student, so I'm very proud to share her grades. So her ninth grade, end of year courses, if you take the old way of calculating it, she right now, in Naviance, has a 4.78, because we give more credit, because we eliminate electives, so the grades aren't counted. Next year, we would have these, and I know we're not recalculating her freshman year, but I'm just using it as a baseline example of what would happen. So her new one, like, that's a significant decrease with, by, in part, including elective, or by including electives, and we did it before, but in addition to that, I did it. It still had, it came down to 4.43 if we included everything, compared to 4.36, so it still was like a point. Those are small things, but when you're...
You said 4.43, that's the average?
That's the average if we did all the classes. And then she came down, she's like, no, I have a 4.78. So then I said, oh, yeah, yeah, I have to back those electives out. So I guess my concern with this is, how did we come up with the new scale? Did we look at some local cohorts that we would have in the North Shore districts, I think this is, did we look at the state, did we look at how this is going to impact? No, because my friend who's the college counselor said, you can't get into some programs applying unless you have a certain GPA. So if we're shortchanging the kids, and the kids don't realize the colleges can recalculate it, well, I'm not going to apply to the UMass Honors College because my GPA is applying, but maybe it would be based upon the state university scale. So I guess I looked a little bit more at this, probably because I have high school students, that it's going to directly impact, and I just don't know where we go from here. I'm not okay approving this tonight, because I feel... I'm not okay approving this tonight because I feel like there's questions I have, there's questions that other people might have to put the guard to it.
Does anybody else have any comments, questions?
Do I have any answers to, or can I get any, well, any responses to that from anybody? And I do appreciate that we are moving towards some new changes and some things, and I appreciate that I think we're giving this a thought. I just don't want to make a change that's going to directly impact, I'll say it, my daughters.
Sure.
But in general, the classes that are going to be impacted in this kind of middle years, that...
So I'll just, let me start first, or Mr. Seymour, I would say fundamentally, I think we can all agree that including all courses is really important. If the rate is, I think, what we've got in question is, are we going to put students out competitive significantly by altering the number of quality levels that is added on to accelerated AP?
Right.
And I think that's something that you'll want to know. It's challenging years that each district sets its own scale, and that's, makes things really difficult. And I think, sure, you just spoke to the college council. Certainly, I mean, we could play these beyond all, but they will have numbers on, okay, talking, this is a quality, I'm not sure, but I don't know how much we can, but I'll let Mr. Seymour talk, he's studied.
Sorry. I still a little early. Yeah, so as you were talking, Chris, I was just thinking, like, there's really two things, well, there's maybe more than two things, but, you know, one of them is this whole idea of currently ranked based on total points, not based on grade point. And so, yeah, the issue with infinite campus, not really being able to think that for us. So are we okay with the idea of ranking students based on grade point average and putting everything into that grade point average? Like, sort of, that's one thing. And then the second thing, which is a lot of what you've talked about, Chris, is that scale.
Right.
The old scale versus the new scale. I wonder what the committee's feeling is around the whole idea of rating an average as our rank system with everything included, not just the way we do it with that weighted five classes.
Weighted, weighted, two separate.
Yeah. So like, and if there's agreement on that, okay, good. Now let's focus on the scale part. And again, I'm not asking anybody to vote, I couldn't ask you to vote anyway, but it feels like that's probably where everybody is in some agreement, and that it's kind of like the scale we need to talk more about.
I would agree with that.
Okay. You would agree with it?
Well, I would agree with, no, I would agree with the fact that I think moving to using whatever our GPA scale is to determine class rank, knowing that in the past it was different because of that inclusion of electives and other classes and things like that, I would agree that the thought process behind how we're doing the new thing, the new scale, using that for class rank makes sense, except for the dual enrollment classes that I still have a little bit of a problem with. But I guess that's back to the scale.
Yeah, we should talk about that, too.
We've talked about that, Chris.
Yeah.
So I guess, in my opinion, my bigger problem is the scale.
Yeah.
My bigger concern is that.
That was my sense.
So then did Bill, Emily, and then...
I'll refer to Joanne first. So I am concerned with starting to include the elective in class rank. So my son, I think he took it as an elective, I think he took anatomy and physiology as one of his electives this year. I'm trying to remember how that counted, but he just put that on as an extra course. I'm not sure I would have advised him to do that if I thought that that was going to be included in his class rank, and what was said, take...
It was included as class rank, because class rank is total points, every class.
Or GPA then.
Right.
But, yeah, so, right. So if I thought it was going to be included in GPA, may have as a parent advise otherwise if I thought my child is going to have trouble with that. So that's my concern. I feel like everybody's just going to go to the electives that they know are the easiest days.
Yes.
And we start putting that in.
But on the other side, for anatomy and physiology, it's based on a merit math college course, correct?
Yes.
So really, should that be a dual enrollment, which would then bring it back up because to reflect the fact that that is a much harder elective than another one? So to, you know, so that would kind of offset it.
Yes. So what you're essentially saying is, I get a C in anatomy and physiology, that's the same as an A, we can get two point ones.
Yes, and a less...
And I think that's what I mean, you say, Mr. Seymour, is that's something we're happy to look into, and look into that.
Yeah, you know, it's just, again, trying to tease out two kind of, two different things.
I think it's my idea to put it this way.
And the scale, you know, again, I mean, I've talked about this maybe internally for the last bunch of years, that like, we need to look at this, but also realizing that this is a significant thing, like, and it's something that, that's why we're here at the school committee, because this is a decision that you guys really ultimately need to make sure you're okay with. It has all these ripple effects, and so we want to make sure we get it right. We don't want to put anybody at a disadvantage, like, that's not what this is about, which is why, again, we were like, you know what, we're not even, let's not even go anywhere near juniors. And for the most part, most of the kids that are halfway through high school, like, they need to just be able to not be impacted by this at all. But then, you know, the scale idea, yeah, we saw it as an opportunity, because you just start to look at it, there's a pretty big gap between college prep and then honors, and it's all sort of clustered at the top end. And there's a little bit of a history around that, of course. So there, we used to have these four levels of classes, and then, this is, this is going back almost 10 years, the, it was college prep, H1 and H2, H2 and H1, and then AP. And so it was a decision made to remove that H1 level, okay? So instead of having two honors levels, it was just one honors level. And we ended up with that honors level weighting being at the H1 level, not the H2 level. So we then went on that pathway, we're not having these multiple levels, we really just have the three levels, right? College prep, honors, and AP. And then we introduced the accelerated courses about five or six years ago. And eventually, got to the point of realizing that those needed to be recognized, and so then we split the difference between the H and the AP with the accelerated level, and now you can see everything's just really condensed up at the top level, and there's a big gap. So, again, it seemed like an opportunity to try to try to redistribute that weighting so that as a college prep weight, you're really not so distant from everything else. So, again, this is something we need to kind of tease out.
Emily, Bill, and then Chris.
So I am in favor of the piece in terms of including, like, having class rank be calculated the same from their GPA, and I, I don't have high school age kids, so I don't, I understand that I don't totally feel that the way other people do, but I, to me, the piece about valuing some of the other things does ring true, but I understand that that might not be, those are your kids. But I, I'm wondering why we aren't using the state university calculation to begin with, if that's like what is generally college expectations, expectations.
Well, that's on the Desi website, so it's not just, you know, it's total.
So I can answer that. Exactly. So I think, generally speaking, I think we probably would, is that as most do, they have a .5 differential, five tenths differential from the foundation, and you notice ours ends up being 4,500s, right? Why is it a little bit less, right? So the reason is, is because you also notice, thanks to what Chris supplied, is we're also the only one that offers an accelerated path. And I think that's one of those components where we split the difference, and when that happened, that honors level came down a little bit lower, other than the 4.5. And, you know, I think the accelerated classes are something that may be in this larger discussion, is something of what role does that really have for us here in Kentucky, and what impact does that also have for us having those classes in a school this small? And it may actually be having more of a negative impact than we imagine, but we'll have to play that out a little bit and see what the, sort of, the data influences, and sort of a lingering question that we'll look to address. So I certainly am not opposed to shifting that back over to the .5 differential, and then we'd be more equitable based on what, and then just splitting that difference of the .5 and the AP, which would shift that back up to basically the state university calculation system. I think it's important to recognize, though, no matter what we do, truly, as far as college admissions goes, they recalculate anything. But I understand your point that kids may not necessarily recognize that, that's a lot of work on behalf of guidance counselors to convince kids that, no, you're three tenths below where you would be, but the states, and that, that's a lot of sort of thinking through.
Local scholarships, I mean, there's a lot of things outside of college application.
Okay?
I think Mr. Seymour and I go back to the days where it was almost Byzantine, trying to calculate GPA and what was the effect. I think this is a step forward, and I support it as a step forward. If we have to recalculate a little bit later on, I think that's appropriate. In terms of getting into college, colleges look at rigor. What are you taking? And if they're taking an accelerated course, they're going to give you that verbal admissions credit for it. Same thing with those students that are gifted enough to take, say, by the time they graduate now, like, maybe five or six APs. That's calculated in too, but to have the separation of class rank and GPA, I think is agent. And I think that this is a very good departure, I think it can be fine too, but first of all, it's not going to put nothing to do in this organization, it's going to please everybody all the time anyway. So I am in favor of this. I think we can certainly come back and make recommendations such as with the accelerated course, but I think this is a very important first step. Can I commend Mr. Conway, Mr. Seymour, and the guidance guy for putting this together?
Let's just make a call.
Matthew.
So, so I'd actually had a question when you were up, but I forgot what it is, so I'll have to think of it a little bit. I guess one of my overarching questions is, we're starting to think about some of the changes going on, how are we as an administration, as Kentucky district, going to start thinking about some of these, and I think we certainly have the people at high school who know the ins and outs and understand the problems and the concerns and things like that, but I also think we have people outside of that. Me calling a friend who's a college counselor who has kids in the district, very quickly got information that she's seen in other places, and that she sees how it's impacting people's applications to colleges, and how maybe even it could impact how we as Kentucky look to colleges and things like that. You know, how are we as a group going to kind of move forward with this, and who are we going to have as part of the conversation to bring in some of those people with different thoughts than we are?
So I'm going to say, even separate from this, college admissions, particularly, we have a stronger relationship, and to build it, I'm hoping right now, I know we already have extensive Utah county councils, they have, and there's direct contacts too, given the policies. But I think the more we strengthen them, and the more, because we have new folks coming in, they do as well, but just to make sure they understand, this is Kentucky, you just picture Kentucky, we just call it without Kentucky. So when you see a 4.37 coming up, 4.37 here might mean a 5.2 in this other school, that's what our clip is on. And I think that's an important thing, because if we don't personalize that with the college universities, it just isn't 4.37 with no regard.
I don't want to step into, I think we should vote on this because we, A, very important, but secondly, we have other very important things to look at, so we call for a vote.
It's her last, wait.
Just a couple of things, are we all in agreement? First, the big overall question is, the GPA and class rank, they should parallel each other, are we all in agreement with that? Regardless of how many different changes we make here, because quite frankly, what she's come up with here with surrounding schools, other than Kentucky, is pretty downstanding. .5 seems to be the thing going, and that's the way it had been for 20 years when they started, except for the entry level course, and A was 4.0. If you went to honors, it went to 4.5, and AP went to 5. So you see each school here, other than Newburyport, their spread is .6. And all the others, including the state university, is .5. The old school that went 4, 4.5, actually mathematically, that .5 isn't as strong as if you start with 3, as in 3.0, as an A as opposed to a 4.0. But Kentucky has tried to, over time, differentiate every change that occurred in education to try to make it an equality in the ranks of all the courses, all the levels, to where we've given point values of system so to make it look or appear that we're trying to give all students the best benefit of the doubt. Other surrounding schools have stayed pretty much old school, other than bringing it back to 3.0 as opposed to 4.0, so the .5 change is really greater as it goes up the scale to honors and AP. The fact that Kentucky has really gone overboard to try to make it real fair for all courses has caused us to be slightly away. So Chris's concern about college applications, et cetera, yes, then there wouldn't have to be recalculations per se, because they wouldn't be equitable, but I see all of these, including A3 next door, is all on the same page.
Can I just answer my question or go with the poll?
I was going to make another comment, so.
Stand there, please, we can hear you.
Stand in the air.
So I just wanted to add some more information, so, so guidance has been doing research over the last 10 years on this subject, and it really started, there was a great inequity between somebody who's taking the CP class and all those classes, and our system, our current system, we really don't get to a CP class, there's .6 difference between CP and honors, and then the honors and AP is .4 difference. So there's a, there's a significant difference with somebody who's taking CP classes in our current system. So number one, that's, that's something that needs to be reflected, and that's part of the conversation. You know, in terms of GPA and rank, like you said, we've created really two different systems here along the way. Rank is equitable between As and Bs among the different levels, but our GPA hasn't been considered that much this year, as you talked about. We pulled some area schools, so 16 area schools, seven of them rank based on GPA. So that's kind of the conversation that, you know, the few ways, what's your basic rank? The other eight don't rank. So that's another probably conversation to have as well, because that, that's a current trend. And then if you, I just looked up National School Principals Association, Secondary School Principals Association, and did some recent research, and I saw that 50% of the schools aren't ranked. So the question is, why? Why aren't schools ranked?
Participation trophy.
Participation trophy. Part of it is that college admissions, as we brought up, so in terms of college admissions, what schools are doing now, they're reporting on the S I. So here's our top 10%, or they might report on, here's the amount of students that we have for ranging from a 3.9 to 3.5. So the, schools aren't giving out ranks, because they don't want to disadvantage somebody who's a 2 or a 10, because they're both pretty awesome students, right? And so they're saying to these schools, hey, this group of students is doing great, and they'll do greater than you. So that's another trend that's going on, and I just wanted to bring up to the conversation, it's not really what we're talking about tonight, but we're going to bring up everything that, probably not.
That's great. I think that's where it hits, potentially having the discussion of whether we do that.
Thank you.
So can I make a motion to accept the adjustment of alignment of class rank and GPA, including electives for both, and then you can revisit the...
Second.
The calculation part later?
We would need to revisit at the next meeting.
Right.
Yep.
I mean, I...
I don't know that it's necessary to do one and not the other, in order for us to proceed within for the campus, we'll need, we'll need the scale along with any change. So it's not necessary to do it. We can table it, we can come back with a...
We can table it, we can come back with an adjusted scale at the next meeting, and we can do it.
Or we'll take a partial picture.
Okay, then I move the thing that I said. So I approve. I think we may not have that discussion again, but.
I don't know that we need to have it. I think the discussion really centers around the balance of the scale and how it equates to GPA comparisons, less about a rank and GPA. Seems like there's rather large consensus around that. And as I look at the scale and I see, I don't see any reason why we can't adjust it back to the, using the five tenths differential. We'll go back and look at it and sort of play it out to see what it does, but I don't see why we couldn't. And then we'd split the difference between that and the accelerated. Truly, it's the accelerated, it's the fact that we have accelerated classes is what is throwing this off.
So I take back my motion and I move the table this till our next meeting.
Second. So we have a motion, I'm going to vote this motion. Motion to table. Vote on the motion. Yes, we do. So can I have a vote to motion? A motion to table this discussion on the high school GPA and class rank adjustments. So we have Chris, Emily, and Julianne. I propose Wayne, sorry, Dick, Bill, and I'm saying Lisa and me. Motion passes to table. Okay, so it's on the agenda today.
Thank you, Jennifer. I want to say.
Okay, so the item on the agenda is the J policies. We're going to request a motion to approve policies. I believe these are in for the second meeting. So it's JFAED, JFAED, JFAEDD, and GFEDDD. So it's four policies. A motion to accept the policies.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, thanks to Brent, we figured out all of my rough drafts have been done in Word, and Word doesn't really like Mr. or Ms. Google. And so that's why the shape of that document looked the way it did and things were scattered, missing. However, the content was still the same. Now, if Chris was here, I wanted to remind her, this is what we were talking about. The blue here is the policies, J policies of Kentucky. You'll notice that Newburyport fills up the entire column and goes halfway down into the second column. Duxbury fills almost two solid columns. So when I said a year ago, after I read our policies, that we didn't have much meat on the bone, I had no idea that there was so much bone missing. Anywhere from 25 to 50% less than what other schools have in terms of policies. So we've got a lot of catching up to do, and I'm pleased to move forward on these policies now.
Is there any other discussion?
I just made a note to the committee around, so what we did decide is on these four, we sort of created a routine of format where we'll bold subheadings, we'll bullet items, and we'll only number when necessary. A lot of times, numbers were being used when it should have just been paragraphs, but we'll have a sort of a consistent format. And if this formatting sort of meets the committee's desire, then this is the same sort of formatting routine will apply to all policies moving forward. And then that way, there's consistency.
Discussion fatal. The next item on the agenda is the school committee's summer schedule. So I need to figure out meeting dates for July and August. So I propose that we need third Tuesday of the month in July, which is July 23rd, and then the third Tuesday in August, which is August 20th.
I'm not trying to be nitty-gritty, but technically it's not the fourth because July, the 23rd is the fourth.
So the 16th?
In here. Did you get the August phone?
Uh, 20.
I wasn't disagreeing with the date. I just took one minute to say that it's the third and then happy. It's one of those hots. I'm fine.
In July 23rd?
Yes. Is it 23rd, 23rd of July?
23rd.
So it'll be the fourth Tuesday in July, July 23rd, and then the third Tuesday, because I don't want to run into the following of the schools, that's fine, August 20th. So can I receive a motion? I have a motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion?
One question, is it still the 6:30 just for the summer? I'm assuming.
Yes. It's all fatal. The next item on the agenda is to amend the building committee, amend the building project committee. So Jermaine is a Marimac representative for the school committee, she's not fellow duties. So Wayne, sorry, I'm standing Wayne is going to continue in that position. Can you accept that? So I need a vote, I need a motion to approve that change.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on fatal? And then we have to move into executive session.
Technically, we have to appoint you officially as the school committee chair to represent.
Don't we have?
I think the position already exists, but it's the chair of the school committee.
No, I know, but on the document.
So all of paper.
It doesn't have, it doesn't matter.
We changed it. Frank had those two as they last week.
I just didn't know if you had to.
So it's all set, right? So we need a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn to executive session.
Okay, so executive session is to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of property that the chair declares, that an open meeting may have an interventional effect on the negotiation position of the public law.
Second.
And we will be coming back afterwards. To the local, Wayne?
Yes.
Jermaine?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Thank you, we'll be back. You're right here.
You got some homework to do.
Card these nameplates of your life.
Glad we included you in on the vote, so I voted, use your vote, your vote is a play. You were the preside of the vote.
So there's one on the session. Do you just want to?
Now I get it. Yeah, you know.
Okay, so will there be any address for the local again? No? So the next item on the agenda is the I Ready Assessment System update.
Just an update for the committee. For the last couple of years, we have been, last year, this year, we've been using Oak Mifflin and Harkforth's Lexile Quantile assessments from grades one, two, all the way up to grade 10. Those assessment scores, as they are, aren't tremendously helpful as standalone scores. So we did some research, saw what some other districts were using, and I Ready, which is done by Curriculum Associates out of Lurica, is a rather popular system that's being utilized both for literacy and math. So we're going to enter in agreement with them to do both literacy and math assessments, literacy for grades three to eight, math for grades two to eight. And their assessments give us a Lexile Quantile score on top of much, much more information that is actually impactful to classroom instruction and grouping and all sorts of structures and stuff. So that's an online test, it's quick, it gives us some other tools and resources, and it'd be a big step for us really to advance, particularly as we get into the middle school. It's going to give us a real opportunity to give us some common assessment data at the middle school with a core. We have a curriculum council that has worked together this year, and they did a lot of vetting of that and had them come up, so they give it their lesson.
So anybody have any questions? The next item on the agenda is the summer infill professional development.
Your packets was a link, and I think you received the emails as well, just an update around our summer professional development, it's a great PD that's going on in the few days after school this afternoon, June. And we have another series that kicks up in August right before school starts. These are optional professional development, this is not part of the mandated dates that teachers return. A lot of good things going on, and then if we move into next year, we're going to be working with keys to literacy, to do writing instructional component professional development throughout our elementary schools. We'll probably continue to do professional development on writing into the secondary schools in future years as well. Other professional development we'll be working on next year will be developing common assessments at the middle school and high schools, so that we have some more of that data that allows us to make some of those decisions around programming, around some of the other things that we even discussed tonight, to have some anchors and some components of most of that data. I don't know if anyone had any questions about the professional development that's been put out there, but we also, we submitted grades today to the state for our SEI endorsement course. We endorse 60 staff members this year that are building by running two different sessions of graduate courses.
Any comments or questions? The next item on the agenda is the system principal positions update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to give you guys an update of where we are with everything in Bagnell. So again, the process was each school put together a team comprised of teachers, principal, PTA, PTO members, and they identified typically eight people that they interviewed, and then they sent to us, the top one to three, I know, Tredie, Mr. Hodges both revolved for my student Bagnell respectively. And after those interviews, we were screened just to make sure we were comfortable with the candidates, the data selected, and ultimately went back to the building principal, and was very pleased with their choices. We have Bagnell, Jim Day, who will be assistant principal effective July 1st, was the selection from their school, from Bagnell. And over in, that's Kate Cage, then, I was trying to get the title right. So the assistant principal slash special education coordinator will be Kate Provo, who has an extensive background, she's coming to us from Masco, Tri-Mount, and she has an extensive background in special education, and has been in leadership position a long time, so I think they did a very good job of identifying that. That was a position that we really struggled with, trying to find out if we had excellent candidates for that position, glad to see. Marimac is actually going back to the drawing board. They're going to go back through their applications. They could not come to a consensus to send anyone to us to review, so they're going to go back to the drawing board, do some more interviews. So either Mr. Buell, Ms. Blanchard, or Mr. Adams, Mr. Buell, you up?
I'm all here.
Okay, so Mr. Buell will be the person I call on once we get there. I think they're going to possibly look at next week, they'll post again, they'll still revisit some candidates, I asked them, I mean, looked at some of the resumes, some folks, individual, specific to some folks. We want to make sure that that school, both those schools have people they're comfortable with, not someone that I choose to say such words. Like that teacher will put in the next one. So that's just an update where we are with assistant principals. You up?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the transgender and gender non-conforming document.
We agreed this to you tonight because it's referenced in one of the J policies that was recently approved. A lot of discussion around a lot of the content of this guide, of this sort of guidebook, guidelines, not necessarily being part of a policy, but really being part of a procedural guide, and that's what this really is done. This is generally a lot of information that comes straight from the state, from the Department of Education. Their Safe Schools Initiative, working with two districts to help create this type of document. We borrowed this from school districts and have sort of applied it to what we have. We've had some folks internally go through it a little bit, and at this point, we're ready to distribute it to our leadership teams and our teachers so they understand as questions come up regarding students who may be transgender, gender non-conforming, or questioning in any way, we have some guidelines here. The purpose of housing sort of all of these guidelines in a document like this is that this document can be updated as we encounter questions and scenarios that we may not have prepared for. And as we evolve in our own practices, we can evolve in our stated procedures that help give the guidelines to our staff. Rather than having everything being a policy, we get stuck by having to sort of follow the policy even when we recognize maybe a scenario doesn't quite apply and we just didn't anticipate. So that's why we put this here, so we felt it was important for the committee to view the guidelines that we're providing to our leadership and our teachers to say this is, these are the things that we need.
Any questions? The next item on the agenda is the school committee's subcommittee appointments. So every year, we go through the different subcommittees, and people can decide what they want to stay on or go to different ones, and then we'll assign a chair. So I know that some members don't listen, I only heard from, everybody wants to remain on the teaching learning accountability and the policy subcommittee. She also was open to be the chair of the policy.
I also would like to stay on the policy committee.
Dick, did you want to stay on the finance as well?
That's fine, that's good with you, it's good with me.
So everybody knows, I mean, I can go through what everybody's on, is there a question or anything? But we have finance, policy, teaching learning accountability, human resource, communications. So currently on finance, we have Chris, Wayne, and Chris is the chair. On policy is Dick, Julianne Marie, myself, and Dick is the chair. On teaching learning accountability, Emily, Marie, Bill, and myself, Emily is the chair. In the resources, there's Emily, Bill, and Deana, Emily is the chair. In communications, there's Deana, myself, and Deana is the chair. So I guess I'm just going to go on the table. Wayne, do you want to stay on? Wayne, do you want to stay on the finance committee or? So you said you wanted to stay on the policy and finance.
I'm fine with that.
So the problem with the policy subcommittee committee right now is they're trying to get a lot of work done and they're trying to meet, like, block time during, during the day.
Yep.
One to three. And I'm not going to be available during those times. So I think that I need to not be on it. So they try to work.
I think in deference to your smashers reelection.
Yeah.
I'll be happy to take your spot.
We're meeting tomorrow, one to three, in the green room at the middle school.
And Joanna, you also want the communications.
That's fine.
Chris? Do you want the finance? And Emily, you are teaching learning accountability and human resources.
No, I mean, I definitely want to be on teaching learning accountability, human resources. And I guess this is sort of my question was, when do we have a met in the past year? So I feel like there had been some shifts when we brought these guys on board and weren't having subcommittee meetings super all the time. So I'm happy to be on that committee, but it hasn't been meeting anything. So if we don't need it, I don't, I'm not too hurt.
I think for the most part, anything resource related, tried to divide or transparent or whatever, there's any feeling like. And I'll let you know.
So I'll just stop.
So we used to, right, have one business meeting a month and then one set of subcommittee meetings a month. Now we've gone to essentially the two business meetings a month so we could be all included in most of the decisions. So maybe we should do what Emily was talking about, which is just revisit which subcommittee we think we need because I didn't even remember that I was on communications because we haven't met.
I don't think this has been really communicated well, just yet.
I believe it was trying to, but I know it was working on that, because I know at the beginning she was trying to get Facebook to come to my school.
The password.
Yes, we get the password.
Might I suggest that that one in particular where it hasn't met, but it is part of last year's goals, that we maybe like set it aside and tune it aside for a bit.
Yeah, but we don't need to.
I mean, because it seems, I mean, I don't, it doesn't really matter. We're just like saying so one way or the other. But until we reset our school committee goals, and then we align our subcommittees, like the extra subcommittees, with those as opposed to the ones that meet semi-regularly, which are created via the finance, obviously, policy and teaching learning accountability as well. So the other ones maybe we, and I think we talked about this last summer, is like we have them as needed, might add or subtract them as needed. I don't want to take away Deena's. Maybe I'll just say like.
Since she's not here, we get to say that she still keeps.
My nominator.
We get to sign her for stuff. So I think it's been posted, other than the building projects. And I think she just reshare. And I'm not saying she's not doing a good job, I'm just saying.
So we're going to put that aside for now. But we'll keep the communication on, okay? Just have it if we need it. So if someone decides to do, it was Deena, myself, and Joanna. Joanna said hi. So, and Bill, do you want to stay on the teaching and learning one?
Sure.
So, um, so Chris, Wayne, and Dick. So every member of the finance committee is currently here, so that's Chris, Wayne, and Dick. Is there anybody that would like to chair that?
I'll be chair.
Anybody else want to? Does everyone do that?
We're good. I'm good.
Policy, I know that Dick and Marie have both expressed an interest in being chair, so do you want to speak to Marie and Dick?
He's here.
That's not wrong. Dr. Swift, Caroline.
I have, I don't need to be chair to be on the committee and Marie's done a fabulous job. So I would certainly support her.
So do you accept the position of being chair of the policy?
Yeah, we voted you in while you were not here.
So then we have all members of the teaching learning accountability here, so it's Emily, Marie, and Bill. And Emily, you would chair.
Oh, yeah, I would agree. This guy, you.
And then last one is communications, Deena is not here, so. So I'll just run it by her. And that's the last item on the, on the agenda.
Can I quickly ask if anybody else has their superintendent of operations to join in? I have Deena's, Emily's, Wayne's, Bill's, and mine is a.
So you're going to bring the results, yes, so you're going to bring the results of the student test evaluation back to Joanna. So if anybody needs that, turn them in, please do, as soon as possible.
So if you can get it to Joanna.
So hopefully you have anything else on the agenda.
Go adjournment.
Joanna?
Thank you, everyone. She just gave it to me.
Do you want my copy of the kids?